Welcome to Bossier City Council Regular Meeting, Tuesday, September 20th, 2016. I have the invocation by Councilmember Jeffrey Darby and the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Jeffrey. Please stand.
That is great. Holy Father, we are thankful for another day that you allowed us to see. We thank you for those who are here for the business of this city. We thank you, Father God, that you are fully in control. We pray for those who are hurting in our country. We pray for those who lost loved ones. And we ask you, Lord, to give us a spirit of faith and not a spirit of fear. Lord, teach us to trust you even in these times that we live. We pray, Lord, for every person who may have loved ones who are sick. We ask that you would help them and heal them. Give us your wisdom today in this meeting in Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Is joining the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Larkin.
Absent.
Mr. Irwin.
Absent.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Harvey.
Here.
For the minutes of September 6th, 2016, regular meeting and dispense with the reading.
Second.
Council, please cast your vote. Have two add-ons.
Yes, sir. The first one will be number 12, under new business. Introduce an ordinance appropriating $500,000 to come from the 2014 sewer bond fund and authorize the mayor to sign any and all documents necessary to acquire property necessary for the construction of the Green Acres Forest Main Project and the Six Fountain Sewer Pump Station Project. First reading.
Other than my motion, we add this to our agenda today.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
The next add-on will be number 13, under new business. Adopt a resolution to hire or promote one senior water treatment plant operator at the water plant and one foreman, one in sewer maintenance to replace vacant positions in public utilities. First and final reading.
Make the motion, we add number 13 to the agenda.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve the agenda. Have it mentioned?
Second.
Council, please cast your vote. Mr. Buffington.
Council, y'all received a copy of the report, the financial, for the month ending August 31st. The first page, again, is the fund revenues. As you can see, we're at 96% of budget overall for revenues. Again, our sales tax is still lagging a little bit behind last year. We're at about 2% down year-to-date through the end of August to what we were last year. The next couple of pages are the individual department expenditures or expenses. Again, the same anomalies for the sewer administration and the water administration and the Marshals Department. Again, the computer software for the Marshals Department. Again, we budgeted them out for the entire year, and so that'll catch up by the end of the year. Again, the water and the sewer administration, those are the enactment of the P-3. We have not updated those budget numbers yet. That'll take an ordinance to change those numbers, which we'll probably bring in forward here very shortly. The treatment plants, again, the issue there are tipping fees. Their tipping fees are running a little bit higher than we had anticipated in budget. That's the waste from the treatment plants that solidified, or they compress it, I think, and then haul it off. Again, the next page is the actual sales taxes. You can see the actual collections for the City of Bossier. Year-over-year, we're down 2%. For the one month, we were down, you know, close to 8%. So annually, we're down 2% compared to 2015. The next page is the manning report. You can see currently, we're at 667. At this point in time, last month, we were at 669, so there's a total reduction of 2. And then the next few pages are the individual water and sewer funds, a little bit more detail, and I'll answer any questions if you have any on those details. But again, the P-3 is performing and presenting the results that were anticipated. The expenditures are far less, and the revenues are holding steady to budget.
That's good news. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Buffington.
Ben Russianback with an update on the P-3.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, Mayor, Council. Put a little packet of information there in front of you. I'd like to point out on the cover, that's not clip art from the internet. That's actually your employees playing in the mud, fixing utilities, doing the hard work it takes to keep our water and sewer system running. The second page on here is really the meat of the update this afternoon, and just wanted to go through these items briefly with you and let you know.
If you could tell everyone, too, in the audience and those listening outside the audience via TV or computer, that this is on a Sunday, right?
Well, I've got more pictures. These are...
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll let you...
We'll get to it. Yeah. One of the main things we've been working with the city on over the last couple of months is the operating budget and capital budget items, one and two. As you guys well know, we've also been working on just the basic general management duties of the department and the divisions within the department. We've prepared emergency contracts for a number of projects throughout the last 11 weeks while at Bobby. You guys have heard about that one in the paving that Mr. Williams wanted to have done out there. That was one in particular. We've got the big 42-inch emergency improvement line as well. All of those are coming to a close. We prepared activity tracking worksheets. I've got examples of those to show you kind of how much work we've done, how many repairs, locates, things like that over the last, like I said, 11 weeks. We put together vehicle inventories. We've done condition assessments of both wastewater plants and what I call you, three water treatment plants, albeit they're all on one site. There's three over there. We also conduct weekly department meetings. We meet all the divisions together on a weekly basis and talk about what needs to be done and where we're at with those things to make sure everyone's being held accountable. And the divisions conduct their own internal meetings with the rest of their employees within that division. Item 11, 24/7 emergency response and assistance with the utility maintenance. That's just every day, all day. It's a 24/7 operation, and we've been right there with the City of Bossier in meeting those needs. One here recently that I'll talk about and highlight here in a minute was just this Sunday with the Rosedale Forest Main. Got a call mid-morning, Sunday morning, that we had a major forest main rupture that needed some attention, and I'll get into that here in a minute. We review the weekly division action items. I've got a copy of what that list looks like here for you to look at. We coordinate employee disciplinary action items. That's an ongoing endeavor, but we assist the City of Bossier with that. The research and implementation of plant efficiency systems is continuous. We continue to work on decreasing power, chemicals, anything we can do to make things more efficient and cost less. General maintenance of the facilities, including lawn cutting and equipment preventative maintenance. We also coordinate purchase orders for the various materials, labor, and related activities critical to the operation of Bossier. We collect... One thing we did was we pulled all of the records. You had maps and specs and plans and piles and piles and piles of that, and we pulled all that stuff together and created a system where if one needed to go find something quickly, one could. That's done. We've also been working in concert with the engineering department to make sure there's a sharing of that information and that the information gets updated. And then just general construction administration services for all the contract construction work that goes on within the utility department. And the last bit there is just a spreadsheet to kind of give you an overview of some of the, what we call, maintenance division items, sewer work orders that are currently open, water work orders that are open, and those are open for various reasons, most being that we need utility locates and things like that to get in and make the repairs. But you've got completed water and sewer repairs there, emergency repairs and the like. So in a nutshell, that's kind of what we've been doing over the last 11 weeks. We've been hard at it. We've got a lot of ground to cover, but I'm happy and pleased with where we're at today. The next page is just sort of what David had mentioned. This was an issue that developed Sunday afternoon, and it was a Rosedale Forest Main, not to be confused with Rosedale subdivision. This is a big forest main that supplies or collects sewer from a big collection area right around Emmanuel Lutheran Church in that area, if you're familiar with that. It's quite a big piece of infrastructure. We had a rupture. City of Bossier folks arrived on-site right around 12 o'clock, and we began digging. If you look there on the second page, you can kind of see what the hole looked like, and that is exactly what it looks like. This was a sewer main. So we were wrestling with that. You turn the next page, you can kind of see where... That's two Bossier City guys. You've got Jonathan Cooper down in there. He's been with the city for five years. Billy Maxey with the city for six years. That's a 10-foot-deep hole that you know what. They're down in there doing the things that most people wouldn't want to do, and literally cleaning that pipe with their bare hands in order to get it prepared for the pipe sleeve, and you can see that on the next page. That happened, we got everything tied in about 5:00. Unfortunately, once we pulled the plug and turned the stations on, it wasn't... The sleeve itself wasn't big enough, so we had to get after it again for another couple of hours, and you'll see on the next page, that's a ManShack employee, Brian Radford and Billy, back down in the hole, sucking everything out of the hole, using everything lightly, and prepping the pipe again to put a larger sleeve on. And we finished that effort up about 7:30, wrapped it up, filled the hole, got things flagged off and ready for it to dry out. It was a pretty big muddy mess out there and got it under control. As I appreciate, the city's been in this same location with private contractors on at least one other occasion, and I guarantee you, it cost a whole lot more at that time than it did Sunday. They did great, and I was very proud of what they did and proud of what we accomplished. They do it day in and day out. The only thing that was really kind of unique about that was it was Sunday, and we were all there. Kind of had limited people. The next sheet there just says, "Public-Pprivate Partnership Action Items." That's a summary of things that we've got ongoing. These are items that are on our radar that we need to keep track of and try to complete. And then the spreadsheets are just more detail. You can see there's sewer repair list, water repair list, and the like. Those are our actual detailed accountings of what's been done, what needs to be done, turn-on and turn-offs. We get call-outs from customer service to shut water off to customers that aren't paying their bill. That's something that we do, and that's a tracking there. And the last spreadsheet, or the second-to-last spreadsheet on the list, is an accounting of the locates. We get calls in every day to go out and locate utilities. Our guys go and do that. I think you'll recall previously that there was a huge number of those that was being added into our work order system on a regular basis, and we dispensed with adding every utility locate that comes to the office and only putting or recording those where we physically go out and have to locate the main. The last item in there is just an update on Bossier City projects, and I put that in there because many of y'all may not know that we do this, but every week, all of the construction capital-related projects that ManShack's working on within the city, we update the administration on where we're at. Where's the construction at? What kind of problems are we facing? What needs to be done? Those types of things. So... Any questions?
No, Ben, I mean, I just wanted... You know, I'd like to thank y'all just for coming in and getting people involved, like fixing these repairs. I know Ben Davis talked about getting our guys back on repairs and saving a whole lot of money, and I think that's what we've got to get back to.
It's very comprehensive, what you've done. I wanted to ask, on your... The water waste system, has there been any EPA-type violations or...
Yeah, that would be what we call a sanitary sewer overflow. We're required to report those.
You had one, too?
For this particular instance would be one incident. And there are occasions. It's real rare in Bossier, quite frankly, to have an instance where you have a sanitary sewer overflow, but there is a reporting procedure through DEQ. So when we submit what we call your discharge monitoring report for your plants, those reports go in as well, and we let the state know that we had an overflow. It happens. I say it happens much less frequently here than in other locations.
Okay. I'll have those. How is the cross-training coming along?
It's coming. We're working on that. One of the areas that we're finding we need a little bit more cross-training in is on the water side with what we call new construction sampling. So when a contractor comes out and they put in a new water main, the health department wants that water main to be sampled and tested before it's brought into service and put on the system. And we're cross-training. The water department or the water division handles that and has historically in the past all of it, and we're cross-training folks from the maintenance division to assist in that arena. It's going. We've got other areas where we're working on, you know, making sure the folks understand how to operate the equipment. So it's an ongoing process.
Sure. I remember that was one of the selling points, and it was going to save us because of the cross-training.
The main thing is to get all of the divisions to communicate. For instance, we had the wastewater plant needed some weed eaters, and we had in capital to buy brand-new weed eaters, and I was like, "We've got two brand-new weed eaters in the maintenance division, and they're stacked up like cordwood in the lift station division. Go get one. We don't need to buy those." I mean, these aren't junkie. These are the finest pieces of lawn equipment that money can buy. So just stuff like that, getting everybody to talk and sit down at the table has been, I think, a big win. It's important to ManShack. I think it's why we're successful, and we believe that it's a big part of the success of the utility department moving forward.
Do we have fully staff?
Yes.
Each area?
We are. I mean, we've got some vacancies. Those were put on here. There is some attrition, and we expect a little bit of that. It makes us run a little leaner, but when we see it, we're trying to react and plug those holes. So far, I think things have been going very well.
Okay. That's good to hear. I mean, it's early, and I know I spoke with Mr. Oliver in the past, and you guys do keep a lot of updates, and that's a good thing. You know, I appreciate it. It's... It looks like we're going the way I suspected.
Well, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Ben.
Unfinished business?
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate $65,000 to install a new cross-drain at Alfred Lane. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote. Phyllis, can I get a recording? If they don't respond, I can play second? Or does it actually have to come live from a councilman?
It has to come live from a councilman, but you're welcome to second, Mr. Montgomery.
Oh, I can?
Yes, sir, you can second.
Well, I'll be 15 years I never knew that. Thank you. Then I'll become the recorder.
There you go.
All right.
Adopt an ordinance approving the acquisition of the property described as 321 Watson Street and 818 Ogilvy Street, authorizing the mayor to sign any and all documents necessary to acquire property necessary for property acquisition in the old downtown area of Bossier City for the Bossier Re-Envisioning Project. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Now, now we're going to have competition. Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance appropriating $2 million to come from the Water Capital Improvement Assessment Fund and authorizing the mayor to sign any and all documents necessary to acquire properties necessary for Bossier City Water Treatment Plant Transmission Water Main Project. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance declaring funding to submit bid to host the Dixie Junior Boys, Dixie Boys World Series for 2018 in the amount of $16,000. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance authorizing the sale of a certain tract of land located at 406 Ogilvy Street to Carolyn LLC for the appraised value pursuant to Louisiana Revised Statute 33:4712.2. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
I'm sorry, gentlemen, can you vote again? Adopt an ordinance appropriating $8,000 from the Public Services and Sanitation Fund for additional overtime to spray mosquitoes. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate $150,000 from the 2014 Utility Bond Fund to complete debris removal and fence repairs that were a result of the June 2015 flood and that are not reimbursable by FEMA. Final reading?
So moved. Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote. New business?
Witness opening of sealed bids for Mike Woods Meadowview Pool Rehab.
Counsel, this is a project that was brought forward by Parks and Rec. The engineer's estimate on it is $540,939. There was no addenda. We sent it out to multiple contractors, and we received one bid. The bid is from Progressive Commercial Aquatics Incorporated. Bid bond is attached. The bid is for $496,750. Ask if you approve the reading of that bid?
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, just to update you, last time at the meeting, we took a bid under advisement for the asphalt repairs, citywide asphalt repairs. We met with Benton and Brown and were able to get that bid down within budget constraints, so we went ahead and awarded that PO also for that project.
Thank you. Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $50,000 to come from the Sales Tax Capital Improvement Fund to supplement $100,000 already appropriated for the purpose of rehabilitating a damaged storm drain at Diamond Jack Casino. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
Is this a result from the flooding we had? Okay, never mind. Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate funds in the amount of $5 million to provide for the replacement of the Big Airline Lift Station. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance appropriating $75,000 from the EMS Capital and Contingency Fund to purchase a minimum of 15 Panasonic Tough Pad FZG1 electronic tablets and accessories for the Bossier City Fire Department. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a count clerk one in the Water Billing Department, customer service. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the city to proceed with development of a project involving issuance of not exceeding $15 million principal amount of public improvement sales tax revenue bonds, Series ST 2017, for the purpose of acquiring, extending, or improving any public works or capital improvements for the issuer, including any necessary sites, equipment, and furnishings therefore, and paying the cost of issuance of the bonds, making application to the Louisiana State Bond Commission, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. First and final reading?
So moved. Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Approved reappointment of Brett Madison to the Metro Approve reappointment of Brett Madison to the Metropolitan Planning Commission, term effective May twentieth, twenty-sixteen, and expires May twentieth, twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Approve reappointment of Walter H. Bookmaster to the Metropolitan Planning Commission, term effective June first, twenty-sixteen, and will expire June first, twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Approve appointment of Michael Vercher as the representative for the MPC Board of Adjustments to replace Harold LeBeau. Appointment effective September twentieth, twenty-sixteen, and expires October thirty-first, twenty-seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Approve parade permit fee waiver for the Bossier High School Homecoming Parade, October sixth, twenty-sixteen.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate a hundred thousand dollars to come from the Riverboat Gaming Capital Improvement Fund to be used to contract with Rayleigh and Associates Engineers to provide design of the continuation of innovation drive with associated water and, and sewer mains to accommodate proposed commercial development. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance appropriating five hundred thousand dollars to come from the twenty-fourteen Sewer Bond Fund and authorizing the mayor to sign any and all documents necessary to acquire property necessary for the construction of the Green Acres Forest Main project and the Six Fountain Sewer Pump Station project. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to hire or promote one senior water treatment plant operator at the water plant and one foreman-one in sewer maintenance to replace vacant positions in public utilities. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Any other business? Mayor?
Just a reminder that the week from the day, no, Monday next week, the governor will be up, and we'll be having that reception at eight forty-five in the morning at the vodka room, and then the chambers of commerce of, uh, locally in Mendon will be, uh, putting on the function for the governor to address the audience. I believe they're sold out, aren't they? But you could squeeze in a few more if you... So, just a reminder.
All right, great. No other business? Meeting adjourned.